I'm gonna call a special meeting of the school board to order. Uh, we have opening exercise. Do we have opening exercise? Alright. Please stand for our opening exercise.
This is a workshop, so it's a simple opening exercise, but I just wanted to tell all of you, we could get a great tour of our iPad classes at, uh, Citrus Springs Middle School. Kids were so excited, and we were so excited to see them, and we went to Christopher River High School, which is amazing. And I just thank God for Citrus County Schools, for everybody I see here, and for all the efforts and passion that people put into the education for our students. Thank you. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
I move to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
We have a motion by Ms. Powers in a second. I'm Ms. Deutschman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any citizens' comments? Okay. Business services, Mr. Bishop. I had fun harassing you yesterday.
Yes ma'am, I picked up on that. Thank you. Uh, good afternoon. I'm just here to request your approval of the instructional support recommendations as outlined on the Goldenrod.
What happened to Mr. Ouzar?
It's my understanding he's elected to take a sub-bus driver position.
So what was he before?
He was a bus driver.
And so...
He stepped back down to a sub-bus driver, is my understanding.
He's the younger guy?
Yes ma'am. That's the son.
I see him at the general house.
I'm glad to see Nathan Varnador's name here. I haven't had a chance to meet him, but I'm going to.
It's my understanding he was entered in line of duty at soccer practice.
Alright, I'll hold approval of instructional support recommendations.
We have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Ms. Powers. Do we have any comments? All is in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm, I'm still waking up from lunch, I apologize.
Alright, attorney legal matters. How does it sound?
I have a, I have a question for you then, because I think you're gonna leave in a few minutes.
I was gonna stay for the policies.
Oh, okay. Well, while we have you on the agenda, can you bring us a little update about our lawsuit with, um, our joining in the lawsuit with the county? I saw an article in the paper about Jeff Green asking for our $75,000.
And I want to thank Mr. Blocker for his reply. Thank you.
Well, a global update would be this. Uh, all the judges in the county recue, well, Judge Thomas recused herself. I think last week they appointed, uh, recently retired Judge Michael Johnson from East Adelaide County to handle the case. Uh, our motions to intervene and all are still pending, as are the motions to appoint, or have approved, out, a counsel from outside of the state, uh, who are DJ. Those are all sitting there waiting because there was no judge, so hopefully those motions will go through rather quickly now.
And who's hiring that attorney by the state?
Oh, that's, uh, property sector, yes. And as far as the other, uh, that's conserved, they submitted invoices, and we're paying those as, as they go, as your, as, as all's instruction.
Who's approving those? Is, are you helping him?
Yes ma'am.
You're both deciding jointly?
Right. They, they, they have sent over numerous, uh, invoices, and then we will review them and decide essentially which ones we're gonna pay based on your direction, the board's direction, as to only pay legal fees. So we did cut a check, uh, for the payment back to Gray Robinson for approximately $54,000, so that'll come off our 175. I did not think that you wanted me to just blanketly give the property pressure 175,000, that you'd rather me review the invoices beforehand, so...
Absolutely.
So, are, are you going to give us, um, periodic updates on how much we pay today, or...
Yes, yes ma'am. And currently to date, we paid approximately $54,000.
Okay.
So that's where we're at. We've only paid one invoice.
Okay. And so, or...
It was only to Gray Robinson who was the attorney that came to the joint.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
Any other business that needs to come for the school board? Mr. Mullen, do you have anything? Ms. Powers?
Oh, that was at the workshop. This is the first level.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy?
No, I'm doing this now.
Ms. Deutschman? Alright. This meeting's adjourned, and we open the workshop. Not that! Oh, policy review. Good afternoon, sir.
We have four policy revisions today. They're proposed, and I will, on my class, as I go through these. The first one is, uh, policy 4.10, the curriculum, revising the policy to add citation 1003.4203 in reference to digital curriculum and web communication. And that basically says that the board may, uh, develop that, uh, but it does not require the board to develop that, and it also allows the board to seek partnership with private businesses for that purpose. And, uh, thank Mr. Blockers here if he has any further questions regarding this particular item. There is one change, I think, that Ms. Powers brought to my attention, which she'd like to make. And, uh, correct me if there's any more that you have on this, but with regard on page three of three, number, uh, 14 there, it says, "All course materials verbal or visual instructions shall conform to the requisites and intent of all Florida law and so forth." Where it references films, tapes, uh, since those, uh, items are somewhat obsolete now, to just strike that and say, uh, "All instructional materials, including teacher's manuals or supplementary, supplementary instructional materials shall be available for inspection." So just strike the words, films, tapes, and the word other.
Well, let me ask you this, though. I, I don't think we can place here. Didn't we have a problem like over two years ago? Wasn't there a teacher that was, was Miss Mullen? Was that shown in film, or was that...
I don't know. Something from online, because I'm not familiar.
Okay. Um, so, um...
I mean, it just says, "All supplementary, supplementary instructional material," which covers anything. So you can leave film in there, but it's still covered even if it comes out, because it says, "All supplementary, supplementary instructional material."
I mean, you could add video in lieu of film and tapes and, and continue on with the other, if that was, but I mean...
Or how about, or any other supplementary instructional materials?
That's good. Yeah.
Or any...
Oh, there's supplemental instructional materials with an S.
14.
Before you didn't say "add" and...
And any other? Okay.
So I'll read it back to you.
Okay.
Okay, it says, uh, corrections, "All course materials in verbal or visual instruction shall conform to the requisites and intent of all Florida law and state constitution. All instructional materials, including teacher's manuals or any other supplementary instructional materials or shall be available for inspection by parents slash guardians of the children engaged in such classes."
Yeah, we just said maybe instead of "or," they had?
Mm-hmm.
What, uh, can you just refresh me, um, was, is this a, this a new policy? I mean, it's a, I get...
It's a new statute.
It's a new statute. And the reason, I guess, why I'm asking is, is, um, I could not see where the new language was inserted.
Well, the new language is just...
Is the whole thing?
No, actually, there is no new language. As a result of this, um, new statute, the language that's being changed is just being changed because it's outdated, and it's, and it's Ms. Powers.
So, but other than 14, where else did we change then? What other language?
You're already changing.
Okay. Where it's, is it then just that one line under laws implemented where it says 01003.42?
4203.
Okay. That was where I got, that, because I couldn't find any other changes at the time, so that's why I...
I know, that's why I thought it was maybe for a new line.
Yeah. That was why I thought it was, because I, but I knew we had a curriculum one, so, okay, thank you.
So, no other changes to that, and we'll move on to the next one. Uh, the next one is, uh, policy 4.10, student progression plan, uh, adding citations 1003.4156, uh, general requirements for middle school promotion, 1.003.428, general requirements for high school graduation, and 1.003.429, accelerated high school graduation options. And then, uh, we also updated the last paragraph to strike the words "job entry" and, uh, change that to cooperative diversified education, CDE, and then strike vocational and change that to career and technical. Mr. Blockers here, if you have any specific questions.
It's basically, or it's basically an updating of the terminology that's actually been addressed in, in policy. So, the CDE, again, that is the program where students are actually working at businesses throughout the, throughout the district, in our businesses, uh, while being high school students. And then vocational is the terminology that has actually an old, old connotation. It's actually been changed to career and technical education. So there's a lot of the CTE courses that you actually visited today at Christopher River High School. Now, the added statutes at the bottom that are underlined are in reference to updates in regards to middle school promotion, high school promotion, and again, those are Senate Bill Number Four, as you are all familiar with. It's also the middle school promotion for, uh, to high school. And then, the third is in reference to accelerated high school graduation options. And those are those 18 credit options that we provide to students. And there's a little language in there that's been changed in regards to making sure that we inform all of our students and parents of those options. One of the significant changes with that is that in prior years, a ninth grader came into the high school and actually had to designate... Actually designate that 18 credit option as a ninth grader. This basically has been updated to say that a kid, a child can actually update at any time during their career at the high school to an 18 credit option. So that's what the third, uh, underline is, which is 1003.429.
So again, this is a workshop. This will come back to you in a public hearing. Next item is policy 7.65, anti-fraud. Uh, this one is adding a new, uh, Florida statute 1001.421 regarding gifts. There is no change in language other than the citation. I have a copy of the statute, too, if you'd like to see it, but there are no changes in the language. And then finally is policy, or, I'm sorry, did you have any questions about that other? 7.70, purchasing and bidding. This one did add some additional new language regarding sealed bids on page three of eight. And, uh, citation, uh, 119.071, which is general exemptions from inspections or copy, copying public documents. And the new language says that sealed bids, proposals, or replies in response to a competitive solicitation shall be exempt from public inspection or copying as provided in section 119.071 Florida statutes. When documents are no longer exempt, they may be inspected and copied, and in no case may be, or may the original copies be removed from custody of the purchasing department.
Mr. Branch, I have a question on this. Um, whether it's in this, and it, it brought it up when I was reading this. I know of circumstances we've had since, I know even since I've come on the board, where, um, members of the public have wanted to have access to blueprints, to documents, and we didn't, we, of course, because they're exempt, um, we exempt them. And then they go on to the bidding computers and databases, which are out there as we bid projects, and they're pulling them off of there.
Off our system?
No. Because as we go out there, is there anything we can put that says that, that the bidder or that whoever that vendor is is equally responsible to this? Because otherwise, it's just a loophole.
I, I, I don't believe so. I will take it, Mr. Kennedy, but I don't believe so. I mean, once, you know, when they submit their blueprints or whenever they have a copy of them, um, so, I mean, we exempt them for security reasons, uh, as well as our public.
But even though that we haven't, they still aren't exempt, I mean, they still are exempt, whether we make them available or not. Are they not just by their pure nature?
I think they're exempt when we have them because of security reasons, um, but I will check and see if we can figure it out, because there are some things about when you're working for a government entity and you have compliance with the Department of Defense Act as far as that's concerned. See if I can come up with something.
Could we not put it even just as a, as a part of whatever agreement we have with that bidder?
I think it's usually like the architect, because he'll handle the bidding, and then, once he puts his documents out, I believe that's what you're referring to.
Exactly.
Yeah, for any contractor to bid on, and they're out there for anybody to look at, to put their bid together. You know, when they post them online. It's usually part of...
And, and the answer that often comes to us is, oh, well, fine, I won't get them from you. You know, we deny them, and then they just go over there and they get them that way.
Well, the problem I would see, if you have five people bidding, and one person gets it, you may be able to stop that one person who receives a bid from the other, but you don't have a contractor. You have four, who are, who have the plans, and I don't know if there's anything about that. But I will check.
Okay.
That concludes the workshop items.
What, what about code of conduct?
No, that's next.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was talking about the policy.
Policy review.
It's an imperfect system.
I know. Alright, thank God, I'm learning.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and do C, uh, the code of conduct. So, Mr., um, Bradshaw can leave after that.
A little space, if you want. I'd like to give you another copy of the code that is numbered, that might make it easier. The pages are numbered. It might make it easier when we're discussing it to reference the page number. Okay, good afternoon again. So our annual review of our student code of conduct. And I'd like to mention just a little bit about the process. We met in early December, the committee, and I'd like to thank the members of the committee who worked with us to take a look at this. Um, as I said, we do this on an annual basis. We have school representatives. We have representatives from different departments, from the district. We have parent and student input as well. School resource officers, sergeants are represented on this committee. Mr. Bradshaw was able to attend and be part of this committee meeting, and we also have our board representative, Mrs. Powers. We had, um, input from Mrs. Powers that she had gathered from the rest of the board as well. And, yes, Ms. Deutschman had a few, um, comments, and I had opportunity to speak with her on the phone as well to help clarify those. So we got good input from the board, and we appreciate that. So we'll go page by page with the changes that are being proposed, so that you'll have an opportunity for discussion or questions, if you have any, in regards to that. It was suggested that the table of contents have a few more subheadings. So I took that back, and, and several of us took a look at that, and we felt like, for the most part, it was broken down pretty much as far as it could be. For example, under discipline, you see where we have the, the breakdowns of the sections. There was, um, a couple of areas that we felt we could break down further. Can I ask you to pass these down? So this would be a proposal to add just a few more subheadings in the table of contents to might make it, to might, to try to make it a quicker reference, to be able to find specific things within the code. So you'll see highlighted on this handout that's coming around, just those, um, areas that we felt we could add to help make a quicker reference. So we're proposing that we make that addition to the table of contents. Can I keep moving unless I'm stopped?
Yes, please.
Okay. Alright. Then if we look at page five, item one, under school attendance. We have updated some wording, as you'll see. We have, the format is, you'll see the original text on the handout that you have, followed by the revised text, and the change is reflected in the shaded area. That is the revised text. So we did change the wording. This is page one of your handout, but if you'll see bullet, we're referring to page five in our code of conduct. So, you're correct, it is page one. So under school attendance, the revised text that is shaded, um, it's just a rewording to be sure that we're in line with the exact wording that is in the Florida state statute. So it's going to be changed to say that the parents or guardians are responsible for their children's attendance and to follow compulsory attendance laws. And then it quotes the statute. Florida statute 1003.21 requires, and you can go ahead and finish reading that shaded area.
So they're changing the cutoff date for enrolling kindergarten?
It actually, the state law has not changed. Um, we are just wording it to be more accurate. Um, it was not as accurate as it should have been previously, so...
Didn't you have to be six by, uh, August 1st, or September 1st?
I'm gonna defer to Regina. She's more directly involved with the attendance issues, so if, if you don't mind responding to that.
No, not at all. The state statute does reference age five, the one a student can be in kindergarten if they like. What was a little bit confusing was the age of six reference, where statute states that all children who have attained the age of six years, or who will have attained the age of six years by February 1st of any school year, who are older than six but have not attained the age of 16, are required to attend school regularly. What was happening, Ms. Deutschman, is parents were not putting kids to school if they were six years old until the following year. Statute says that if they are six years old, for example, this is February 1st. If a student is six years old by February 1st, they should be enrolled August 2012 for this school year.
So, a, a student was five and a half, and they weren't putting them in kindergarten?
If they were five and a half on February 1st...
No, I, September 1st.
No. They have to, they don't have to. They have to be six years old by law. A five-year-old can enroll in kindergarten, but it's not a statute that they have to.
So what would they do with a six-year-old? If they held them out of kindergarten at the age of five, now they're six, let's say their birthday is in July, and they turn six in July, would they...
July of, of, like, 2012?
Well, then they'd be a baby. They wouldn't be too, they'd be too young to go to school. Well, I mean, they would turn six in July, be, uh, okay.
And if they were never in kindergarten?
Yeah.
The school could do an assessment to see where they would best be placed?
So the students could skip kindergarten?
Yes, ma'am. And what we have found out is that there are many six-year-olds who have turned six in December, November, January, and the parents were leaving them out that whole school year until the following year.
And then putting them in kindergarten as an older kindergarten student?
Absolutely.
So, okay.
So the classes are based on what would be sent to the R. Is that, they could be doing that for not really bad purposes? Just think that they shouldn't have a shot on the school, so...
We monitor through siblings, or sometimes we get calls that neighbors see kids out and about, and we check into it. And a lot of times, parents are either unaware of that, or they choose not to send their student to school. And now that we have it in our code, and it is statute, we can enforce that they do attend school.
But will you get that out like the newspaper, or something, so parents who really aren't aware of this will now be aware? Because if you're not aware, you're not gonna have to go and ask for a code kind of...
It's something we, we could consider. It will go in our calendar that goes out to parents, but we, we could consider possibly at the beginning of the school year, highlighting that. Yes?
Or towards the end of, uh, the current school year, newsletters, even just reminders.
Yes, yeah, that's a good idea.
You know, any siblings that you have that are...
Very good idea.
Thank you.
Just a second, before you go. Does this make me think about the acceleration option by law? Wasn't there some language in there about, um, an early entry? You know, we have, isn't it if the student comes in and is not five by September 1st, you can enroll them in public school?
No, you can't.
Can't?
In the state of Florida, you cannot.
Right. So you can enroll them if they're underage in second grade, is when you first bring them in, when they're... They go to private school for kindergarten, first grade, and then they become a second grader. We accept them in second grade.
We can't stop a student's continuum of education. If they went to a private school, even if they were enrolled at four and a half or five years old because September 1st, and let's say, Georgia, and they moved here, who would have to enroll them? We cannot deny them, admit... We cannot deny them admission once they've started that process of school.
Well, there's something magical about second grade, they can then go into second grade and be younger. There's nothing in statute about that?
Once they start.
Yeah, because we've had parents come to us, come to private school first grade because they were raised and we've had them taken before.
Okay. No, in the second grade, because I know several people that have actually done that, brought them in as second graders, they were, their birthdays were in October, whatever. So, they would not have made the cutoff kindergarten. They put them in kindergarten in private school, kept them there for first grade because, maybe I'm going back a long time about this rule about second grade. There used to be some second grade. No?
I didn't take advantage of that. I'm bringing a bill for me. But you are right that if they were in private school, whatever their age was, and if that private school had enrolled, then yes, we'd be our obligation to continue their enrollment, even if they were not successful in that grade.
Okay. In the acceleration bill, was there no provision for a parent to enroll their underage child into kindergarten in public school? If that's what they wanted?
I'm unaware of that language, Mr. Flock.
I'm looking right now, ma'am, and I do not see in the statute, but I will further look for that.
Okay, I remember discussion about that. I don't know if it was just talked about whether it was included or whether it was left out. The seven or five times?
Yes.
Okay, move to page two of your handout, which is referring to page six in the code, item 2A, excused absences. We're gonna be looking at bullets four and five. You'll see the original text and the revised text. Revised text for bullet four is to add the word immediate to family. And then for bullet five, to be more specific, and restate that to say, religious holiday of a student must be documented by parent or guardian three days in advance. Just a little clarification on those two bullets, not changing the meaning or the intent.
Immediate, um, discussed that one time at another meeting. I don't see why it has to be immediate, because you have too many children living with other relatives that you would call immediate, but not mom and dad. Why would you say, I'm sorry, you're after spring on a dose of everything you're saying is?
We're leaving that to the discretion of the school administrator, and they are flexible in that area. It's just that they were getting more and more broad as far as what they were considering family members. So, we felt like something needs to be put in place to help us and support us if we needed to limit that. But again, the school side administrator is being flexible in that area and they're recognizing aunts that may be close to the family, yes.
What about the next door neighbor or their friends, their parents' friends, they have to travel out of state?
It's up to the building administrator if they're gonna consider it in that particular area.
I just don't see any reason to have immediate.
Final decision is yours, the recommendation from the committee is they felt it would help them.
Here's some of the thinking behind that, because a lot of our building administrators excuse many of those absences that you're talking about, but they probably have some bizarre instances that they didn't have anything to back them up.
Like what, at least on funeral, they approved?
Well, some, some of their relatives, or they weren't relatives, and they really want them, they just, excuses are coming in, so.
Did they go to the funeral?
They couldn't even verify they were.
And a lot of them, by my, they're out of state or out of county. And the excessive absences without having any proof has become excessive. This is discussed at the code, we have representation from each of the high schools and middle schools and elementary, and they're all starting to see it. Knowing that if you approved this change, you would always get the discretion of this school and that they would do it to the best interest of the child. Because you're right, there are a lot of kids being raised by people who are their parents, but it was getting very excessive. My girlfriend's father, he was like a father to me, who lives in Georgia. Couldn't be verified, we asked for a copy of a bid that was not provided. And that's just one of the most recent ones that has brought to my attention. And it's a sensitive time, you don't want to constantly ask that student or that caregiver for information because it is a sensitive time. We wanna be cognizant of that too, so it's a fine line. If the school principal or school assistant principal knows the situation with the parent and they refer to guidance and they know that this yes is. But, Ms. Deutschman, we've had some students who in a year have lost three to four, six people who are very close to them. Well, what I'm saying is it's not just a one case, it's just been going on and the school would like to be able to have some, a word put in here that would help them. Now, immediate family could be your godmother or your aunt who's like a mother to you, that would be the discretion of the school.
Final decision is, or?
So, there's a lot of excuses that parents bring to the side of the school that are still excused that may not be specific to be mentioned in, you know, the code, but if this, if it just got in the way of the church. I mean, if you haven't been to a funeral here, this is a six or seven funeral to your very close relatives, then you're probably gonna be excused.
I understand, I understand how it works, but I think that what is said should reflect the way that it works. I mean, make it obvious, it's immediate.
That's good. If you had a school for illness in the family, like if they die, you can't.
That's a good point. I, in events of that's an excellent point.
I almost think the immediate family should be the illness, not the death. Because those would be, you care probably your parents.
If they're family, some of these that we're talking about to me don't fall in the definition of family anyway unless by the discretion of the principal.
They write about this names.
Yeah, so, no, yeah. Well, because it's like, you know, my uncle Arnie, which I've always, or even, I've always called him Uncle Arnie. He was the neighbor, but he's not really family. But I do think if you have, if you're, if major illnesses in the family of the student don't have immediate, then is death in the family any different?
Do we have more deaths than illnesses as far as we're given?
Keeping tally?
Gosh, would I impress you if I said I had those stitches? Can you come to the microphone and tell us that?
I, I can't. I said, would I impress you?
Yes, you would.
Then I would say I'm spending too much time at the school board. I know what your next questions will be. That's something, if you feel you would like to have that information, we surely can give it to you. I can share with you this much, in my time at Student Services, in the last couple of years, I've been hearing more of this. Schools have called me, you know, do we need to accept this, look at this letter, this is the second or third time. And they're very weary and very cautious to not be accusatorily. And so, we say, yeah, accept it, but you know, just watch, make sure that student makes up their work. But it just seems to be becoming more and more excessive.
Then it's not so much who is in the family, it's really in what are we requiring as evidence. So, it's not who died, it's how do you show that somebody actually died and you went to their funeral? That's really, I think, maybe the more issue. Whether it's excused or not excused, they're not gonna be at school, whatever the excuses of the day, either worked or dead.
Right. I think all funerals need to be on Saturday.
Well, that's, all right, that's in the rule.
Is that a policy?
Just a thought.
There are airlines that will give you a grievance rate, there are employers that, you know, give people paid fees, but you need to show them who died and where he went. Not that you have to have a sign from the funeral director, but some, I think, some people require a death certificate. I think the airlines require a death certificate. So, maybe the problem is that we're not specifying that it has to be documented or it has to have some sort of evidence.
And for those, it's a method of abusing, but not for everybody.
Well, I think you need to have the.
It's not actually the prodigal of someone that died.
The other concern I think might come up where, how much time do we give them? Because I know schools have said to me, I said, well, have you asked for this? Yep, they told me it's coming, but they told me they couldn't get it this week. Well, they told me it was in the mail, but they didn't get it yet.
Don't you know they died?
So, how much, how much time?
It's an excuse until it's excused. I mean, that, doesn't that?
If I bring in a doctor's note, is there a period of time?
We have three-day Ps out here at high school. Can you, are you like saying we're a bunch of kids and we don't know what really happens at your school?
I would never say that.
Oh, jaggedness to go with opportunity.
We need some real life experience.
I, I think, y'all really disagree. I mean, we know what kids we're gonna have problems with and what kids we're not. I mean, a kid has five funerals in a year, I'm gonna really look into that. A kid has one, comes to school all the time, he went to see his buddy's mother who passed away or to the funeral. I'm gonna, I'm gonna P code that or special absence, action for that kid.
So, what do you need for us to help you be able to enforce, know, if it's, you know, if it's bogus or it's suspicious? The word immediate to me doesn't seem like that's going to take care of the problem, but if that's what you all are suggesting, well.
What do I need from the board?
If you have the word immediate or not immediate family or family, does that give you any more strength dealing with the situation, any more power?
With the bogus kid?
I can't answer that. I mean, just, you know, most of the kids I deal with, a lot of times, probably them too. Parents will call before they go, what do I need to get? You know, I wanna make sure everything, my eyes are, you know, my eyes are dotted, my T's are crossed. But there's, those kids out there, they're just gonna, buddy friend dies, he doesn't even know him, he's going to a funeral. You know, but a lot of those kids won't even bring you a note, but sometimes they will and I'll ask them, you know, what, what'd you go for? What's your relationship here? And if he's a chronic kid, he's never in school, I'll deny. And I don't usually, I don't usually get any fight on him.
So, who wants the word immediate put in here? Y'all asked for that or is this a committee recommendation?
It was a recommendation from one of the schools. We had one, at one meeting, it was out, I didn't catch it then, so. But we took it out at one time because it seemed to make sense to us.
I think it kind of streamlines, the wording kind of streamlines, go to a funeral, bring us a note, you're excused. You know, immediate, they gotta think about, you know, how am I gonna get this through so I don't have to take the Compse final or something of that nature? It kind of narrows the path of just a generic, funerals are open for everybody, let's all go, you know, and then bring a note back.
So, you can get out of taking a test by going to a funeral?
Exactly.
So, now we have, we have a specific mission to accomplish with the funeral. So, all right, so then I, Linda, I would agree though, if we use the word immediate, I think we should also include it in the second bullet.
It's got, that's exactly.
Of the immediate.
You have to make them the same.
They should all be the same immediate family or no immediate.
Major illness in the immediate family of the student. Put immediate up there.
Okay, put it in the response?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So, you got more than?
I would like to take it out.
Because I think the death of the person is close to you, I think their immediate family or not is something.
But it'll be left up to the, to the school.
But the administration still has the discretion.
Yes.
What I understand what you're saying.
Work very closely with them and.
Yeah, it's not just anybody that's in my family.
The problem is trying to prove that somebody's a family member or not.
Is a dog a family member?
Apparently is.
I'll tell you, for some people it might be.
Hey, but ask Mr. Flock.
He did get quite a quiet when we said that.
As a point of reference, for the excused absences for illness, we require a doctor's note. Is there anything that requires any documentation for these other absences, like the illness of a family member or the death of a family member, to document that that actually is real? Are we just taking so much for it?
For an illness of a family member, we usually take the word of the parent. And as far as for children, a child, a student being excused absence, we take a note from the parent up until there's ten of them. Then after that, we ask for a medical. So, we do take up to ten notes from the parent or guardian.
Thank you.
So, on page two, we're gonna add immediate to bullet two as well as to bullet four, correct?
Right.
And now on your page three.
Why don't, why don't we go on the religious holidays?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, bullet five, we did reword it, I think I read that already. So, that highlighted we're rewording for the religious holiday.
I hate to even bring it up, but is there, is there a problem that's been used? Because now we're talking about, before I can celebrate that holiday, I've gotta give three days' advance notice. Do you need a baptismal certificate of that religion to show that? I mean, what is, I mean, because again, I'm thinking, I'm sure that Mr. Connors has dealt with it both ways, where it's like, you know what, my kid's not gonna be here on Friday because, you know, they don't do that. To, by the way, we just started worshiping the goat and the goat says we can't come on Thursday. It happens to be, there's a test, but you know, there's also a goat.
We do have quite a few, as you can see so far and yet to come, changes in the code in regards to attendance. And that's why I did ask Mrs. Alagretta to be here, as well as we have the high school assistants or the, to help with those questions regarding attendance. They work more directly with it. So, would anyone like to respond to Mr. Kennedy's question?
Is there a problem that why we have to tighten this up?
The religious holiday stuff.
We're now asking for three days' advance notice from the parent or guardian.
Most of what I see with things that are related to religion are like retreats or things like that, where due to their religion, they need the time off. And those, almost always, I've never had a problem with somebody not being able to come up, you know, ahead of time to say, you know, we're going on this retreat, it's part of our family, whatever, and, you know, they get a principal excused. The one, you know, if it's a holiday, holiday, I don't know what you guys have seen, but I mean, even those are, like if it were Hanukkah or something like that, even those are things that are asked for in advance. I've never had somebody come and say, you know, oh, by the way, so-and-so missed school because we had a family Hanukkah celebration or something like that. So, that, I think the three-day thing, you know, in advance, it again, kind of like what Doug said, it just keeps that, those things streamlined, that they know there's an expectation that we need to know where the kids are. When they're not there for three days, we start wondering where they are and then we're like backpedaling trying to find these kids. And then they come back and then we find out, oh, okay, you were at a religious holiday and, you know, that's really, I think, the main thing, why it's nice to have that information that much ahead of time.
Plus, you know the duration of it, where five days, a student could be out. And when questioned about it, the mother will say, well, he was rehired out because of our religious holiday. When you know ahead of time, the school can then get that work prepared so when that student comes back or comes home, the student will take it with them. Just the duration of it, it's carte blanche. At least if they have a note, they'll know the timeline on it.
We had on page six, I found a new one, refers to religious holidays, but there it doesn't have other students. It says, absences of students of religious holidays must be documented. Should we not, on that, which corresponds to the moment we're on now, place other students? Absences of students of religious holidays must be documented.
Religious holidays of a student, yes, I can do that. And then I'll refer to that again when I get to page six, so they'll, okay, of a student, very good, yes, thank you. So, are we comfortable adding that to, or changing bullet five to that?
Your answer for me. I'm good.
Anyone else? Okay, so that finishes page two of your handout.
We're wasting right along.
Okay, if you look at page three, we are just rewording that last sentence of page seven in the code for a little bit of clarity, where it said for high school, students must attend class fifty percent or more to avoid absences. That was a little unclear, so we're clarifying that to say, for high school, a student must attend each class period a minimum of fifty percent to avoid being marked absent. So, again, we're not changing any of the intent or the meaning, we're just making it more clear to the reader. Correct, you can't go to class for five minutes and get counted present for that class period. Need to be there at least fifty percent of the time to get the instruction. Hey, are we good?
Yep.
All right, still on page three, talking about page eight in the code. You'll see the original text is all one large paragraph. It was suggested. It was suggested and it's now being recommended that we separate out that note by having a space, so you'll see the revised text. We're gonna have those first two or three sentences and we're gonna have a space and then we're gonna put what the note is, to make the note stand out a little bit more. So not changing the content, just the format. Okay, then page four. You'll see the original text and then the revised text. In the revised text, the recommendation is to remove the sentence that says, "A student may request an administrative review or appeal to an attendance committee for a waiver of this rule." And then it also removes the part that says, "And to verify in writing all absences in the event of an appeal with documentation and to verify all absences in writing." The recommendation is that we do away with, that we remove those two sentences and do away with this formal written appeal process. The reason for this is because there's a lot of time and effort that's put into this written formal appeal process. It's a lot of time on the part of the students, the parents and the administrators to go through these written steps when the end result is the same, it is granted. Um, because our administrators in our schools are working so closely with, um, the kids to help them be successful, that it's granted and they assist them in working through the process and doing the best they can to get the credit for the course. So rather than bog the process down with this long written appeals process, it's being suggested that that part be removed.
Is this something we began in practice already?
It is something, um, I had the opportunity to speak with these board member about, but we would definitely not change anything that's in our protocol conduct without reading.
That's what I was gonna say, but I think that we, we kinda piloted there something and.
Talked it out and talked about the possibility.
And, yeah. Just wanted to.
Are we good to continue?
Yes.
All right, on page five. The revised text is removing that piece that's mentioning that waiver for the appeals process. The next couple of things you'll see is just in different locations, taking out that wording.
So if there's no appeals process, are we doing away with failure due to absences?
Someone like two percent?
Excessive absences?
Any volunteers?
No, we're not, we're not changing that, Mrs. Doishaw. What we're doing is, students are still gonna be held accountable, they have five or more absences, their parents will be notified, they will talk to, um, after three absences, four absences, five absences like they have already. What this allows every student to have the opportunity to do is to take a comprehensive and hopefully, hopefully pass it. In the past, students who did not do that appeal process because of what is written here, the school administration's hands were tied and they had to pass that, they had to have that paperwork in order to be granted that opportunity to pass the comprehensive.
Some kids didn't.
Correct, so they're trying to.
Some kids' parents wouldn't fill that.
Right, I mean, I, listen, I've not been a fan of the appeals process.
No, so the only thing we're taking away is that part of the process. Parents and students are gonna be notified probably more frequently now and encouraged. Listen, you got an A or B in that class, you're gonna have to do the appeal process, we're granting you that appeal, there is no waiver to approve, just pass that final. It also does not preclude any parent or student who bring in a medical. Once they get that phone message or that, um, dial out or that face to face, they still have that opportunity. So all that still is in place, we're just trying to level the field for those kids who for whatever reason didn't turn in an appeal.
So then, on, still on page five, in the middle of the page, we would remove that text for number three, which is in line with what we're talking about. If you'll go to the third bullet there. On the bottom of five, um, we were just correcting a typo, it's corrected in the original text, but, um, the code, it's actually incorrect. So, looking at the top of page six, those three bullets. On bullet one, we're just making a correction and putting the word or, absences for illnesses or other health-related reasons. So that's just a correction to a typo. Tab two is adding immediate to be in line with what we've already discussed.
I don't know where you are on that.
Okay, at the top of page six in your handout.
Yeah, it doesn't have four.
If you see the three bullets, exceptions to failure due to excessive absences, you've got three bullets.
Oh, but you skipped over number three, that's underlined, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's showing me the original text, I've gone to the revised text. For bullet one, we made a typo correction. Bullet two, we're adding the word immediate. And then bullet three, um, we're changing that wording and as Mrs. Powers pointed out, I'm going to include absences due to religious holidays of a student must be documented by, to make it consistent with the other page. And the, are we good with that? All right, page 10, uh, still on page six of your handout. Referring to page 10, we're just taking out the words and the description and then on the next page, the flow chart of that written appeals process that we're eliminating.
But, um, as June said, the student still knows that he has to, um, have an appeal.
Correct.
You don't have to just go through the steps. So you notify his parent, your approval, that, um, he grabbed an appeal if he asked, he doesn't.
No, he doesn't.
He doesn't have to go through that process.
But, okay, now, I know he doesn't go through all this.
Yes, ma'am.
But what does he do if he, uh, would, he's granted an appeal, what does he do?
He has to study hard, sing like he has before and pass the final. But what has happened is when the student for whatever reason didn't bring that paperwork to administration, he just never showed up for the final.
Okay, so, but he's now made aware of the fact that that year, the danger of.
Absolutely, there's, it'll be called down like they have been in the past, parents are still gonna know. The beginning of the year, the administration will tell the students, you know, that we know written appeal process, but you still will have to take and pass.
And there's child study team meetings that are still occurring on.
They're, they're having them after three absences instead of five, more dial outs are going out, so parents are.
And, and this is more in line, you know, if it was an algebra class, the student was absent from and took, took the EOC and passed it, he'd get the credit anyway, regardless of the appeal.
I'll, I'll never follow this, um, complicated appeals process of algebra, much better.
Very good. Page seven, halfway down, talking about page 12 in the code. We're wanting to add the words, the recommendation is to add home placement. So you'll see the revised text that says, students who are on hospital homebound or home placement instruction are counted as present officially for the attendance record. We're already doing this, so we wanted to reflect that in the code. The next bullet, we're talking about page 13 in the code, and this carries over to the top of page eight. We just want to, um, correct it and rather than say the Department of Health rule, we want to, you'll see in the revised text, top of page eight, we're gonna change it to be correct and we will be saying the Florida Administrative Code sixty-four F dash six point oh, oh, two. So we're just correcting a, from a Department of Health rule number to a Florida Administrative Code number. The next bullet down, still under revised text, we're just doing lowercase, school health room for school health, just to be more grammatically correct. So ready to move on to zero tolerance?
Wait on the volume, um, suspension from students. Uh, students may be suspended on principle for up to ten days, students will be referred to remanded to the custody of students, parents, um.
Nope, I'm not quite there yet. You just finished page seven.
Sorry, I see, I'm on it, go ahead.
Is that all right? Does it start at, um, okay. So we're looking at page fifteen. Page eight of your handout, referring to page fifteen of the code, talking about zero tolerance. It was suggested, and I have another handout for you here. It was suggested that somehow, that we all look at this section so frequently. The board members look at it at our expulsion hearings, the school administrators look at it any time there's a situation that comes up. And it, it was brought up, is there a way to maybe define the possession and the consequences to make it stand out a little bit so that it's more easily, when we flip to that page, we can, instead of having to read through the entire section, we can pick out what we're looking for. So as we took this back and looked at it, we really found that there's a good, clear definition of possession and consequences, that are, it's already here. But maybe to bold those three sentences for those three paragraphs to make it stand out a little bit more and a little quicker to recognize when we're trying to find the paragraph that applies to our scenario. So we thought it might be helpful, a little beneficial to go ahead and bold those areas. Are we okay with that?
Good.
All right, thank you. Now we're looking at the middle of page eight.
Goodness gracious, sorry.
Where we're talking about page nineteen in the code and it's been suggested that we bold the note.
What?
That we bold the note that is saying that parents and guardians need to send a note in writing if they don't want their child to have it.
We don't have one, but.
No, but by state law, we still have the right to do that, it's been left in the code. Someone's asking that we bold it. I think there's some mixed feeling in that regard from the committee because do we really wanna draw attention to it and point it out when, you're right, we're, we're really not exercising.
Is it time to remove it?
It has come up at previous board meetings and after much discussion, the decision has been in the past to leave it. It was not suggested to the code, to the committee this year to remove it. So we didn't have that discussion this current year, but in past years, they've not wanted to take away something that the law allows us to do, I don't know if you wanna comment on that.
Mr. Bradshaw, if any one of our student staff members were to paddle, would that be something that would probably come across your desk as a, so why do we continue to have it in the code?
Because by law you can.
But we could probably put other things in the code too we don't have. So I mean, if this is something that we have no intention of doing, it really is, we're just printing paper.
Um, and. There's been strong discussions in past years, um, not in the most, one or two recent year or two, so.
A, as a school district, I certainly don't endorse us doing corporate punishment in this day and age. So I, I'm not sure why it's not time that, that we don't remove it from the code.
I wonder when the last time one of you guys got paddled.
I'm thinking the last time I got paddled.
Maybe next year.
I'm talking to.
At, at least this board member would like to see it removed from the code.
I don't know many administrators have used this since they were adopted.
So we're saying so, hey, cause we're putting it in.
Cause if we bold it, it's gonna bring up the thing, I would rather see it removed than bold it.
Yeah, I would too.
I would go on then, I, I think if, if it is done, the parents should have bold to know that it is done. But if we're not doing it, it's nothing happening.
Any need from input from the committee or parents?
No, I don't think that there's anything that we should condone about paddling. You know, we philosophically don't believe in paddling students and I think that's, that's part of our role, that's policy.
I remember the last dude I paddled. He was huge. He just looked down at me and said, are you done? Yeah, it's funny, I am.
So the consensus is just to take it out altogether?
Fine.
Yes, everyone?
That's the same discussion, Mr. Bystek, they were about to say, which we have years past where we had.
Major discussions at the committee meeting, so. It did not come up.
We are easy.
Well, I would also say that the administrators who had used paddling in the past, I, most of them, I would say, I don't know about this crop, but I don't think, I can't think of a single administrator that I would say would.
Mr. Claude and I got it.
I've done too, I've paddled.
When was the last time, how many years ago?
Oh, I couldn't tell you, many.
Nineteen seventy-two. Nineteen seventy-two, I'll have the exact date.
Wasn't effective, how was that?
Wasn't seventy-two for me.
Yeah. She wasn't a major.
I think it had its place then.
I found part of the code that says that the district school board may prohibit the use of corporate punishment if the district school board adopt, has adopted a written program, alternative control of this.
I don't know, what, what is that all right?
And so your code of conduct fits an alternative program. There's this list in the code of conduct specifically. So take it out.
Mm-hmm.
Number fourteen, number fourteen?
Yep. Fourteen is gone, and just renumber fifteen through seventeen.
Wow, where do you see a fourteen?
On page nineteen, I'm looking at the.
Okay, I'm looking at page eight, I'm sorry, okay, so.
So on page eight, it says, page nineteen, item four, right above, bold, bold, no, six.
Thank you. Okay, we're taking out page nineteen, number fourteen, all of that, okay. Got it, thank you. Okay, page eight of your handout, referring to page twenty, item nineteen, it was just a typo. The original con, the original text said, parent slash S, of course, that should be apostrophe, so we corrected that in the revised on page nine. Halfway through page nine of your handout, we're referring, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to that one part of it. The, um, students will be recommended to the custody of the student's parents during the specific suspension. So you have plural students, and that's a small point, but the next one should also be plural. If you have plural, I've seen your singer, you're plural.
Where's the second spot that you say needs to be corrected?
The second sentence, where it begins, students plural will be recommended to the custody of the students' parents. So just either make both singer, both plural, which is. Well, the first one is student's plural, like more than one of the second one was plural.
So whether or not we're using an apostrophe, it needs to be consistent? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Put S apostrophe on, instead of apostrophe, S on the second line.
Student's parents, okay. All right, on page nine, halfway down.
Wait a second.
Okay.
Are we, um, suspended from school, original text, could we just skip over that part?
No, um, we had a slash S, the corrected revised text is putting, adding the paren's S instead of a slash S.
Have a slash in the audience.
Do you see the shaded part, is that not, we have, we're saying we want to have.
There's the original text and there's the.
Do you see the revised text? The next page, is that correct, the revised part? Okay, just making sure, cause it might not be. Okay, page nine, halfway down, referring to page twenty-three. The inappropriate use of the internet. We do not have a final decision on proposed policy from the board yet for page twenty-three or twenty-four, talking about inappropriate use of the internet and possession or use of electronic devices. So the recommendation from the committee after Wes spoke to that was to not make changes at this time, to wait till we have a final decision by the board and then we'll do that in the form of the addendum.
Um, except. One, we do need to, we've got to get this board to come to, to a use with the AUP.
As far as the beginning, I did ask, I, I believe, we helped, we're gonna workshop that policy.
Good, well, where is it?
We didn't put it on the.
Policy.
Okay, but it's not on the agenda, maybe I'll put it back on the workshop agenda.
Five students, we did. So we gotta keep track of this stuff, okay?
Are we ready, is it taking that?
I, the last, the last conversation was, is that it wasn't ready for prime time and then that was the last.
And you know what we're.
And, and I guess we're gonna workshop it.
So we don't have a workshop?
And you're saying that if.
I didn't. Well, there's two things, I think, one, that's got to get done because, again, it, it really, the, the, the S is fine, but we still have broadened that entire conversation out um, with the AUP. And either we need to take that one back out and dust it off and, and workshop it or we need to send it back to the committee and let them come up with something, or somebody's gotta come up with something. But I, I think that's still where we're at and my concern is, is I know we're starting this a little earlier this year, the, uh, the code, but I think it would be good to have that in place so that either we put it in the code and reference our policy or it goes into the code, depending on how that works.
I've played out a couple of timelines here, cause we have a timeline set to get to print, to get it in the hands of the kids by that first week of school. So if, if it were to be discussed very soon, it could possibly make print time, but we're very tight.
Why can't we put down, figure twelve, board meeting? You wanna workshop it, but still put an item on your top down.
I have no problem, I just think it's time that we, it's gotta get done.
Why do you print in the code of conduct? Why don't you print it before the time's up?
I played it out, but if you do discuss and work on that on the 12th, then we could request to advertise on March 12th. It could be for final approval on May 14th, and we could go to print shortly after that, so our time would still work. If you wanted to postpone it into the workshop, which was February 26th...
You can still play on the March 12th, which I mean to advertise it.
It would have to be requested to advertise on April 9th.
Oh, March.
Well, only if, because we've gotta get those things to get that, to make it on that agenda. That would give us one day, I would have to have it. And so, yes, if you were to workshop it on the 26th, then information would have to go to, get to Linda V. Within a day or two, so...
You can add it to the agenda for the call.
On the 12th?
Just don't prove for advertising. If they give it as an agenda, they give it up to the workshop.
We have like a...
They want to workshop first. Workshop.
On February 26th.
Yeah, I know what you're saying, though. Then it's gotta come back to us in its final format, for us to staple, approve it in this format to advertise.
So, we workshop it on the February 12th?
12.
And then, we bring it back at the next meeting to approve for advertising, and we still have time?
Well, maybe what we could do, why don't we look at it on the 12th? And what, last time what happened is we ended up sending it back to the committee for more stuff, right?
No, we actually just said we were gonna workshop it. And then, and then it just kind of, that was, that was, nothing more was done.
If you all discuss it on the 12th, you can call a special meeting with a workshop on the 26th.
Okay.
Well, that time to request...
I mean, can we still advertise it from the 12th to the 26th? We still have time? So, we could put it on, we could have a special meeting on the 26th with our workshop to announce, so, to inform.
Linda, are we correct that if we workshopped it on the 26th?
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, I'm not a big fan of doing these kind of discussions during the board meeting.
You could workshop it on the 26th, and then call a special meeting to get rid of the workshop.
That's what I was wanting.
Okay, that's what we'll do. Linda, the 26th?
That being the case, here's the other piece of this. There's two pieces when I read this. There's the AUP, the... Yeah, I was just gonna say, I apologize. The authorized user policy. And that is, refers to, I believe, is Section S, the inappropriate use of the Internet. Then the question becomes T. And I think we've sometimes mixed these, and I even have struggled with this. The AUP is about the use of the Internet, the network, anything of that regard. Section T has to do with whether we allow or don't allow possession and use of cellphones, digital devices, and other things. Meaning, they are not necessarily, they do or do not, I guess, is my question, should be part of the AUP. Which, again, goes back to, because we have these separate here. We have the use of the Internet issue, and then we have the use of the cellphones. And then it comes, and we really have two sections of that, T and V. So, I guess my question is, is "S" has to do with the AUP, but "T" and "V" have to do with the use of the devices themselves. And that, I guess, isn't really part of the AUP.
I don't want to give you one.
No, I guess, I'm asking, it, we have it separate now. Is it staff's understanding that that's the way we want to continue to keep that? So, that when we talk about the AUP, some of the conversation that overlapped had to do with kind of making it BYOT. Because initially, that came out of the idea that we were giving access to students, to the Internet, and that they would then log on, and all of those things became an issue. But they're separate issues. One has to do with just whether they, whether we give, whether we have given them access to our network or not. Our policy, whenever they use a computer, is the AUP, which is part of this Section S. Is that correct? So, that's separate from whether we're even gonna give them access to their own devices or not.
Right. Tell them you see Internet, number one. And number two is, what are they using the Internet for?
Right. So, the AUP, when we talk about that, I guess, that's not bring your own technology. That's not about students using their cellphones. Although there may be references, that's not what gives them that power to do that. It's this Section T and Section V that does that.
Which y'all left out in the first discretion.
Well, that's, well, that's gonna be my next question. Is if that's the case, there are some things in here that I think we've had conversation about, that I think we need to address.
And would that be, like, for instance, you had shared with us, our Christopher High School has a much more lenient policy on use of electronic devices, as other schools, and it's ended up being very successful. So, why wouldn't you want to share that same philosophy from the board model with other educational agencies?
And that's exactly it. Also, for example, it says here, on the school bus, when being transported to or from without permission of school personnel, that you can't use your phones. We've had extensive conversation, that that gives total discretion of whether one bus driver allows it, and another bus driver doesn't allow it. And is it our intention to say, "It's a privilege, you may do it, and it's a privilege, that privilege can be taken away", but it is not necessarily granted on a bus-by-bus basis?
It's not one.
Right. No, no, but that's what I'm throwing out here to say.
Well, that's a philosophical...
But it is, but it is one, I think, we've begun that conversation with. As it stands now, as I read this, it says, "I can't use my phone unless the bus driver says I can use it." There are some, I think, bus drivers, not necessarily that they were doing anything wrong, but thought, "Well, the policy says you're not allowed to do it." They don't even realize...
We actually changed the policy last year, because I think it was unclear as far as the buses were concerned, and they gave them the ability to allow.
So, now, my question is, is are we wanting that to be something that is a directive of a bus driver? Or is that something that we think is, that buses, like the cafeteria today, I think, was calmer when we had students that were allowed to utilize their electronics? And that it should be privilege-based, that privilege can be removed from them? Which would be my feeling.
It's more uniform.
That it's more uniform. Otherwise, what we have, and I think we have that now, is one bus allows it, and another bus doesn't, and, "Well, you let me, but that one doesn't", and then there's this back and forth. To me, there needs to be uniform, which is privilege-based.
Now, that makes sense. Usual, where we get the most argument, is whether it is a uniform, and citrusy allows, or can't abide us, and the parents can't believe so.
Well, if you would like, we can, for the workshop, rewrite those both ways. One is it's privilege-based, and can be taken away, and others like that. You can look at it and see which one you would want added or subtracted.
And I would ask, then, the same thing be done when it comes to the use of that and include that as, again, there is, on both sections, for school and for bus. Does anybody, you know?
It's fine.
Starchman here? Well, one, that was...
All right. Sorry, I'll go back to you, I think.
So, is that workshop, February 26th? Mr. Bradshaw, we're discussing it?
Yes.
February 26th?
They were gonna have a workshop on that day. And then a special meeting right afterwards, so that once it gets workshopped and worked, then they can approve it at that point in time to go... February 26th? February 26th?
26th.
Because that would still put us within our time limit. What time would that workshop start at?
It's a morning, like, usually.
Yeah. It's a morning work? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Still on page nine, the last bullet, referring to page 25, teen dating violence. We're just adding to that title and abuse, to be in line with what DOE refers to it as.
They say teen violence and abuse, is what they say?
Yes, they do.
All right.
We had to impose that rule on anybody?
I hope not.
Okay, page 10, referring to the dress code. It's being recommended that we get rid of a standing figure. It was a little unclear, caused more confusion than clarity, but to keep the seated figure, because that one is beneficial and helpful when they're enforcing the code. So, we're asking that we completely remove the standing figure and the bubble. Are we okay with that?
Yeah, just, I still have a problem with the term "the halfway mark", the halfway mark of what? That's what, the little picture wasn't clear, and this isn't clear. So, can you say halfway between the hip and the knee? Or how do you, what, halfway of what?
Look at paragraph two in the box. "Halfway from the top of the leg, the crease that your hip makes when you're seated, to the outside of the bent knee." So, there's the, that's where we define it.
Didn't say "S" is front above. So, that, it's, I want to add it, so...
So, in that box, you want to say "as", it's not, I wouldn't say it's necessarily above, right?
As in the figure, or...
No, what's the halfway mark?
I don't, I don't believe it's created a problem up to this point.
You could actually, you could actually just inside the box, put the halfway marks defined as while in a seated position, and then now we'll clarify.
Yes, it would.
Would you like to add that?
We said the halfway mark is defined as, you know, while in a seated position, which are halfway from the top of them, in that way. That kind of makes the definition.
Okay, that's, thanks.
Okay.
They put something in. Mr. Clodger's done it so often.
I thought you were gonna demonstrate that from one of his powers.
You know, I've done it so many times, I speak up.
Okay. Page 10, still the last bullet. We're just including the acronym FERPA, because it's so commonly used. And then, page 11, just changing the contact information in the code to be in line with the shift in that responsibility within our department. Are we good?
Everybody okay? Thank you, Mr. Starch.
Yes.
You've been a real trooper.
Thank you very much.
I think we're gonna take a five-minute break now.
Do you all need me for the FERPA portion of the workshop? I think the rest is food services.
I think you're good to go. Thank you.